Good evening. Okay, it's 5:00 and we're going to get our workshop started. Did anybody sign up to speak at the workshop? I didn't, I didn't see on the list that anybody had signed up. Maybe anybody who wants to speak, if they don't want to speak at the workshop, can speak at the regular meeting in an hour. So, so I'd like to just call this to order. And we're going to start with this workshop with going over some, just discussing some of the items that we'll be voting on in the meeting. And our city manager, Dennis Baldwin, is going to lead us through most of this. So we're going to start with, there's five different agenda items we'll be discussing. And I think most of you have the paperwork.
Mayor Potem. Hi, how you doing? Welcome, everyone. We've just got some regular agenda, excuse me, some discussion items we wanted to have in the workshop. And we'll go fairly quick on some of this stuff. It's not a long discussion and it's pretty explanatory as we go through. The first one I'd like to have is the chief financial officer. Carrie, come up and talk to us about the credit card processing fee with the new ERP.
All right, so I gave each of y'all a handout. The current credit card rate that we charge when people pay with either a credit card or a debit card is 2.5%. So when we switch, we are technically on schedule to go live at the end of this month with FundView, the new accounting platform that we will be using. They charge us a 2.5% fee. So if I totaled up, and this is a balance sheet item, so you don't see it in any of the revenues or expenditures. Basically, we had about $28,000 in fees that they, that we had charged residents or customers based on that 2.5%, based on the 2.5% fee. So if you back into that, that's roughly $1.1 million is total revenues collected, revenue slash receivables, depending on what type of fund it originated in. So the new software company, FundView, their set fee is 3.5% fee. So we have the option, we don't have to change our fee that we currently assess residents and/or customers. So if we do not do this, based on the math that you have in front of you, the city would eat about $11,000 in excess fees that we would need to start budgeting for. So it's either we decide to keep the current credit card processing fee set at 2.5% based on whenever it was approved in the last ordinance or resolution, or next month we will increase it to the fee amount suggested by FundView. And it's, it's not necessarily FundView, it's the credit card company that they utilize, which is not the same company that we currently use. So.
And we don't have an option.
No, they only use the one vendor. So which, we were not happy with OpenEdge, the current company, and well, we weren't happy with anything associated with ENCODE per se. So the option, you really have two options. You know, keep it at the 2.5% fee, knowing that the city will subsidize the people that use credit card fees, anywhere from, you know, $11,000 to $12,000. Or we can increase the fee to the, the one that the FundView promote, you know, typically tells their customers to use at 3.5% and then we basically should break, unless there's any kind of, you know, one-time charges or anything like that, so.
And then you can also do an auto withdrawal or a debit card.
Right.
To pay your bills, and that's no fee.
Correct. Well, and some of these then would be, you know, of that 1.1 million, we have some that you cannot do that on, like with court costs or building permits or anything like this. So this is not 100% tied to utility billing, either water or marina.
Yes, we welcome it.
Correct. It's going to be 95% of it. So yes, that'll be one of the things that I think then we can get with, you know, with residents, because then that would be, if you're utility billing, you are a resident of the city, to make sure that, one, stop paying the 2.5% fee currently, or the 3.5% fee that it's going to go to, if that's what y'all are okay with, so.
I have a question for you. Was that adopted by ordinance, that fee?
That was one of the things I needed to look into to make sure.
If it was, then this is a discussion item that if it's a, if an ordinance action item, then we'll bring it back for consideration next time around. But if that's how it was adopted, that's how it had to be changed, so.
Right.
Wouldn't all our fees be ordinance-based?
You know, you can ask Legal on that one. My take on it is.
It's a generic question, I know, but.
Yeah, well, you know, you accept a budget by ordinance too, but a lot of your fees usually have specified specificity that you don't normally have in your budget. So I don't know what Neil would say, but. Okay, there you go. So if it has, if it hasn't, then we'll still bring it back and get it done right. If it's not.
Yep, so I mean, then y'all's direction is just to think and let us know if you want to keep it at the 2.5% currently, or?
Carrie, I'm going to, I'm going to hit you with a question I know you don't have the answer to. Do you have a ballpark on about how many residents this affects? How many residents actually use the debit or credit card feature and pay that 2.5% versus dropping it off or auto draft or things of that nature?
I can find that out and let you know. But, I mean, let's just, I mean, I, yeah, I could throw a 500, you know, customers out there, but I don't know if that's anywhere close to it or not. Yeah.
Out of about 2,000?
Yeah.
Or maybe a four?
Yeah, that would have been my guess. I mean, yeah, roughly if this, when I backed into it, I was thinking it was a little over a million. So if we have 1.9 roughly collected in revenue, that it might be closer to 50%. But some of those will then be, it depends on the size of the bill too, because it was, the guy was asking me, and it's kind of a tough number to figure out, but I think I can get with Katrice and let you know. Yeah, I would think it'd be anywhere from 25 to 50%.
Are there any savings from FundView, switching over to FundView, that we could use to offset this for temporarily, period of time?
I'd have to go back and look at the budget, but yeah, I think that was, by the time we did it, there was all those incremental extra costs on, within code. And so knowing that I did not look 100% at the agreement, but I thought it was going to be anywhere from $10,000 cheaper on a given year. But on the same token, now we're going to, it's going to pivot and we're going to utilize a utility billing, like a mailing company to mail out some of our bills too. So some of this stuff might, by the time we're all into it, be a wash. But it was really, the biggest savings with FundView was we had a sunk cost of $250,000 in Fund, in ENCODE year one, and we didn't have that here, so.
I'm not one to, just overall, to, for the city to keep absorbing these type costs. You know, for instance, the healthcare costs, you know, we absorbed the family portion, or half of the family portion, or maybe it was the whole thing, this year. And, you know, we're not going to do that next year. But as we come across these things in our city, I mean, we can't just continue to absorb expenses. And if it is spread over 1,000 people, whatever the number is, if it's 50%, I just, I just want to throw that, because these are maybe one-off decisions that we make, but then as they add up, okay.
Welcome. Sorry, guys. Just to catch you up, that first, that first round part eight to discuss credit card processing, and they've gone from a 2.5% to a 3.5%. So we will have to decide if we're going to throw that cost back to the grid.
And people can do a direct pay from their bank account and there is no fee, or a debit card, yes, and there is no fee. So there's an option for no fee to our residents if they choose so.
I tend to, I tend to agree with you in that I don't think the city should be absorbing these fees that they can have pretty quickly, so.
And especially you can pay by check. There are other options that you don't have to use a credit card or a debit card. So we can do a better marketing campaign to get people to stop using those, because I mean, it's not any money, the city's making any money on either. And I know people sometimes think that, you know, with the processing fee, the city's getting some of that money, and that's not the case.
And a lot of people call it a convenience fee for you to pay by credit card. It's for your convenience that we're accepting it.
Yeah, just one last comment. I think if we're going to, whatever we decide, make sure that everybody knows what's going on, so it needs to be part of the, telling the citizens, make sure they understand ahead of time, so they don't get blindsided. I know 1% is not going to kill anyone of us, I don't think, but it's just another little economic prick in our bodies, you know?
Yes, yes, I agree. Okay, I think we'll go on to the next item, and we're going to discuss the investment policy.
Yes, yes, what we have here is, everyone was sent the investment policy. It's in draft form. There's, you'll see an effective date of 1 October 2024, and it can slide one direction or the other. But this, what I want you to do, if you wouldn't mind, is take the time to read it through, compare it to other things that you might see out there on the internet, look at your own city, what have you, and give me some feedback about what you, as a city council member, would like to see insofar as your investment policy. You currently have one, but it's not been used, I say, well, it was, I guess enacted around 2020. So it's dated and there's some things that probably should have been changed or included that's not. So this is more overarching to make sure that the priorities and objectives of the city council are met insofar as investment policies. One thing I would say is that there's different interpretations of what should be done out there, and every city goes through it. The bottom line is, after I get everybody's feedback, I'm going to try to come up with what I think is the balancing for the policy, to bring forward for recommendations for action. And at that time, we'll go ahead and do the normal process where Legal has a chance to look at it. You all will have the chance, plenty of time to stay before it comes forward. And then based off of that, you all will either accept or not. If you don't, then maybe go back to the 2020 one and move that one forward, but you need to have one. The state doesn't give you an option in that. You're dealing with public funds, so.
We have one now.
Do what?
We have one now, it's just not updated and maybe doesn't.
It's not in compliance with the state law. That's what I'm saying. So if it's not in compliance, might as well not have it. So, you know, so that's how I'm looking at this here. So yeah, let's go ahead and if you could give, send me that feedback, and I'll get that back to you all as soon as I can. One thing I would like to do though, is just kind of, kind of get consensus if I can. This speaks of an investment advisor. A lot of cities use investment advisors because it is very complex process, and it's very costly when you make mistakes or what have you. Investments can, obviously they make money, so you, and some of that fee that's made would be offset because you're going to have to pay for an investment advisor, so they're going to take some of that profit you'd make. But the thing of it is, the state regulates how funds are to be invested. I think it might be worth at least looking at what's called a request for qualifications, get an investment advisor to submit their proposals, so I can screen those and bring those to you as well. So if you do adopt this policy with that provision for an investment advisor, which I think it limits risk, and if you have turnover and things of this nature, you're more steady as a community moving forward, your dollars are more protected moving forward, and that's ideally what you want, and that's what the state wants. That's why we have those rules in place. So what I'd like to do is, if I can get a consensus to say yes, go ahead and look at an RFQ, bring it to council, then I'll work on that. I don't need an action item today, just basically if it's something that you all be willing to entertain for further discussion is all I'm looking for.
Dennis, would this advisor be fee-based?
It's, they take a, they take a, usually a portion of what is earned off that to further compensation, just like you would if you, you did it in a personal capacity, yeah.
Look into a fee-based advisor?
Do what?
Can we look into a fee-based advisor? Because right now, we're pretty much all in cash, and.
It is, maybe I misunderstand what you're saying. They are going to charge you for the work they do.
Right, but sometimes it's hourly-based, fee-based, as opposed to contingency-based?
Oh, I don't know. Usually it's the portfolio, the size of portfolio, you know, there's certain things, the criteria they use. I don't know the answer to it, so if I do an RFQ, the scope of work I can bring back and let you all know what it is. It's good to get it right the first time, because it's, it's the, the best path forward to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. So if it means bringing the scope of work back to you all, then I can do that, and you can feel comfortable with that aspect of it before it goes out. Ultimately, if there's an investment advisor, it has to be approved by council. Ultimately, if there's going to be this investment policy, it's going to have to be approved by council. The contract with scope of work will include, because you don't have it currently here, about 10 hours of training for staff, because they need to be brought up to speed. It's no fault of their own, but you all haven't had that for some time, and we need to make sure they're brought up to speed, and someone of that level can guide them in the process. And same thing we do with audits. When I worked in another city, I end up bringing, that's part of the provision, the scope of work, I want to make sure that the staff was trained up properly from the auditor standpoint in certain areas that were very difficult to understand, and this is one of them. So besides the policy and making sure that they're comfortable and they can give you guidance on what's the best policy, this will be a good boilerplate for that, but it also gives us the training the staff's going to need, because we're going to have to have some internal procedures and controls to make sure that everything's done the way it's supposed to. And then we'll be able to create a little bit of legacy where we keep those best practices moving forward in managing the city's finances when it comes to the.
I have, I have a couple of questions. On page two, under the investment committee, it talks about the mayor or his, his or her designee being the part of the committee. Would the mayor then have to do the 10 hours of training along with the staff?
No, this, this deals, now, they can receive investment committee training, if you will, that can be included. But what I'm referring to is the actual transactions to, when we decide that it's time to, let's say you sold some bonds, you had $5 million in bond money for water distribution system for improvements. Well, we don't want the money sitting there. You definitely want it invested, making money, and you also want it released at certain stages in order to get those dollars available for that CIP project. Well, that, that's the kind of training that, that someone needs to understand, because you're going to be buying securities, you're going to be selling securities, and while you'll have an investment advisor overseeing and coordinating all that, the transactions still have to be performed by the city. So unless there's something I'm not aware of. So I think the answer to your question is, there is training they can receive. It doesn't have to be the mayor, it was in some of the places I've been, and other times it's not. It could be a council member, it could be, you know, a citizen, however you want to do it, similar to your audit committee, no different than that. But yes, they can receive training, and I can make sure that's in the scope of work.
I don't think we have an audit committee.
No.
No, no. Yet.
Yet.
Let's get caught up, and then you're right, I think that's a good thing to have, so.
So then the other question I have under those members, it talks about the chief financial officer and then the senior accountant. Do we, is, is one of our staff a senior accountant?
They are. The problem here, in this particular town or city, you only have too deep in your finance department. Now, I don't have a recommendation for you beyond this today, but I do think that, well, first of all, there is, there are safeguards built into every aspect of this, from when the transaction's there, to where if money's being held, it's still, it's got to be collateralized, collateralized up to 102% of the value of the, of the investment, and make sure that those are released to the city in a depository where we cannot be, we won't be outing anything during a transaction, that kind of thing. And that takes the training, and the long story short is, you've got two people in finance right now, the CFO and senior accountant. So we'll have to, I am, I've had discussions offline with staff about, that's not good, but at the same time, I don't have all the other things going very well right now. We have other things that, that are suppressing, so I'll have to come back and look, and maybe that can change with a staffing change, but right now, that's what we've got.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis, do you have a suspense for us, and when you want those reviewed in our comments back?
In the next week or two. I mean, I think that a couple of weeks would be good. If you need more time, obviously, just let me know, so I'll, but I'm, when I get them, because everybody, we're not going to agree, I can tell you right now, there's things that I think we'll need, you may not agree with, I got that. I don't, but ultimately, it's going to be your documents you're going to adopt, and the state requires us to have one. So whether you use the old one, whether you use this one, or whether you create one of your own, that's going to have to be a document that you will own, and you'll be managed, and you'll be held by that. Because just as I'm a fiduciary for the city and responsible for certain things, just like Carrie is, so are you, as far as the state's concerned. So it's very important we get it right. And so yes, I think a couple of weeks should be fine. And if you need more time, just let me know, and, but I'm going to take all that and try to wordsmith it the best I can to get all these things, with, at the same time, trying to make sure that the infrastructure's there to do the things we need to do.
Okay.
Can I highlight a couple of things? Because Dennis and I have reviewed this, and I've given him my feedback already. But when you go through this, I wrote down questions that councils should be, what I think you should be thinking about. And to me, the first one is, what is our risk tolerance in investments? Historically, it's been principal preservation at the expense of higher yields. That's what we've had in the past. So as you go through the investment policy, you'll see, there's a list of about 11 different types of investments, and they're all different yields, and they're all different levels of sophistication. Now, some of those, the investment advisor will be advised, well, all of them, the investment advisor will be advising us along the way and explaining the risks. But it's important that we tell the investment advisor what our risk tolerance is, because we don't want them, you know, going out for commercial paper or something when maybe that's not in our realm of, of risk tolerance. And the other thing is, what length of maturities? What length, what length of investment maturities do we want to think about as a city? Because the different funds, you know, are going to require different payouts, like Dennis said, you know, the capital, we might be able to invest longer into something when maybe the capital project isn't going to start a year from now. So think about that as you go through the funds. And the other one, besides deciding who we want on our investment committee, the other one is that, what was the other one? Oh, yeah. So Carrie, this is going to require a lot of changes to our accounting. We're going to be establishing new funds. Some of the funds will require historical restatements. So as you go through, he's, there's an investment strategy in there for each fund. Some of the funds we don't even have yet. Carrie's going to need to set all those up. He's going to have to go back and historically try to create what should be in those funds for the fund balance. So there's some system issues that come along with this. So just throw that out, and as you go through it, you'll see other things.
I might add, some of those will have to change anyway, because the way it's set up is not best practices, so some of that's going to occur either way. But you're right, there are some things, for example, enterprise funds we've got, but there's also things like special revenue funds and things like that, and those dollars need to be managed a certain way. So you hit the nail on the head, there's definitely some, some things that have to be adjusted, but some of them are going to have to be adjusted just because that's something we need to do anyway, but I agree.
Absolutely, yeah, and like the grants, you know, we got the ARFA grant, and that should have been put in a separate fund. It shouldn't have been commingled with the general fund. We just didn't have the fund set up. Carrie kept it separate, you know, on an Excel spreadsheet, so that we knew we were keeping the monies clean, but, you know, we're not going to be able to do that going forward, so.
I think it's a brighter future moving forward, and your money will be making better, be, I think it's going to be more secure. It does limit the type of securities. It has to be pretty well rated, very protected, or you're not allowed to, to invest in. And those are the parameters you'll set. That's why I say it's priorities and objectives that you're trying to achieve in this policy. So look at it from that perspective, and that investment advisor will, will more than pay for themselves, I think, going forward. Plus, you are probably looking at some investments, some issues of debt in the future, and there are some investment advisors that don't, but others do provide that service. But I need training for the staff, I need training for this investment committee, I think it's a great idea. And I need to make sure that we have a great policy that's sustainable long-term, and make sure we create a culture of legacy where one leaves, another one comes on board, there's already a system in place to guide them on how to deal this, deal with this kind of stuff.
If we go to RFQ, how long do you think it would take before we would have?
Your RFQs, RFPs, doesn't matter, you're usually looking at about 45 days. That's why the date on here can slide. The main thing is, is to get it right, and it can be rushed, some goes a little 30 days, but the whole idea is you want certain things, and not all companies, the better we vet them, and we'll rank them, and we'll be able to show you how we got where we did. I wouldn't recommend a company I don't feel comfortable with, but at the same time, not all companies. It's kind of like when I built a building once, they had, I had 20, 30 people, 20, 30 different firms wanted to do it, but by the time they saw the criteria, it only went down to like four or five that were qualified to do that kind of work. Same thing with this, we may only for four or five. You're not a big city. The same principles apply for investing on a small city or a large city, doesn't really matter. But we need to make sure that whoever it is, whatever firm we go with, if that's the choice you make, then we want to make sure they're definitely able to deliver what we're expecting as a city.
So what, what kind of risk tolerance are some of the, like, bigger, I'm very conservative in a lot of those kind of things. So bigger, the other cities you've worked with?
Like, okay.
Like Colleen or up in Dallas?
Your risk tolerance, a lot of people like, let's take securities in general. When you look at CDs, well, CDs are important, and a lot of cities use those, and there's nothing wrong with that. There's certain criteria we'll have in place to limit the damage that we could ever have. All securities are risky. The least risky are your T-bills, your three and six-month T-bills are 90-day, I should say, 90-day and 180-day T-bills, because they're backed by the full faith and credit of the United States. So when you look at it like that, technically, a CD is, is more risky than a T-bill. And so it depends on how you want to look at it. Our job is to make sure that, to mitigate that risk as much as possible, and to make sure that, that when all things go south, we've got our, for example, that's why you have sometimes collateral, and that collateral has to be held by a third party, and it's got to be put in our name. Let's say, I know this is really confusing to some people, but let's say it's a repurchase agreement. Repurchase agreements where the bank will loan you money temporarily, and at a certain rate, and agree to buy that security back, and it's used to bridge things. Sometimes you've got like some maturities that you're getting close to, but you're not ready to cash them out. So if you can take some bridge funding, if you will, to get you over that hump for whatever that case may be, you don't have to sell those securities, you can go ahead and let them mature, and we get the full return. And your, your repurchase by that bank, they, they're going to get interest for their loan, that's basically what it boils down to. But that, those securities they're going to give us are held in our name by a third party until such time they repurchase them. But if let's say they defaulted or something like that, those purchases are, those securities are now ours. So there's safeguards built in there, and that's what we're looking for. We need to find a better way moving forward, especially given the complexity of some of the challenges you're facing, roadways.
Drainage.
Drainage.
Water.
Water distribution system, your sewer system, and we've got lots of storm drains. There's a lot of things that it's going to take us some time to work through, and this kind of stuff will help us do that. And the better, more capable they are as an investment firm, the better and more capable we will be able to respond to those issues.
So our assignment is to review this and to go online and compare it with others that we may find. Would you suggest maybe like TML websites or?
You can, or you can check, cities that, you know, it's like some people would look at Fort Worth or Plano's being a premier city, but they're also larger. Some would say, well, Leander or, or, you know, some of the smaller cities, maybe San Marcos are smaller, Marcos is smaller, so maybe those are it. The principles will apply, big and small, so I hope you all remember that. It all depends on the controls, and the investment advisor that we hire will be the one that finally should be, the one that says, look, I think there's some things that's specific for this community that we need to address a different way, and we need to hear them out, discern whether that's something that you all want to do, and it's ultimately your decision. This document is no one else's but yours. And, and I might add, even though sometimes there's investments, firms that you're associated with, brokers, dealers, stuff like that, some cities, like Colleen where I came from, they don't list those brokers and dealers that are authorized on the back of your investment policy. But in like Duncanville, they did, and I thought that was a pretty smart idea. That way, every year it's updated. The, in Colleen, what we would do is, we would decide who, the CFO would decide who's the best, what broker-dealers were the best responsive and the best interest of the city, through the advice of the investment advisor. On the other hand, they kind of made that in somewhat of a vacuum, and this is written that way. However, I would prefer, and it's not necessarily done in a lot of cities, but I'd like to see but I'd like to see that listed on the back as an appendix. So you know when you adopt that which are going to be the authorized brokers and dealers that you're going to be dealing with. It's actually a good practice and I think other cities should adopt that. It's more transparent and you know who they are and it limits that CFO. If they decide that somebody should be removed or added, they can always come back and, before the governing body, and change that.
The GFOA, I think it is, Kerry? Anyway, the government, financial, yeah. They have criteria for what should go into an investment policy to comply with the law, if that will be helpful. TML has some criteria.
Public Fund Investment Act is what all of them are from GFOA, everybody. The Public Fund Investment Act is required. It's one that tells you everything you need to know. There's a lot of information there, so, but it's in the local government code. You can look that up.
And also, I just pulled up Curvilles just because it was easy to access. I just went to it immediately. And it's about 11 pages and it has about, you know, 90% of what this policy has too. So, you know, if you want a live one, well, just pick a city. Usually their policies are pretty accessible.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, Bud is a good city, so.
Okay. All right, so we will look that over and then we'll come back next, next month to the council meeting or to this workshop again.
But I have a, do everybody in agreement, then I'm going to go ahead and do an RFQ, so, okay. And I think that's good and that gives me something to start working on there and that will help the process significantly.
A comment was, I just sent everybody the policy from the city of Vuda.
Just as an example.
A good one for everybody to look at.
Vuda has a good policy where he's going to send it to us and we'll look at that.
The next one?
And the next item on the agenda is to discuss storm recovery update.
Yeah. I want to thank first and foremost, city council and the staff for doing some heavy lifting during that storm. Literally and figuratively, it wasn't, there was, it kind of came on fast, a lot of damage. It didn't just affect us, it affected our neighbors. But this was used, I mean, I came from a larger city and both places I worked were larger than this. But I'm telling you, the quality of work with what you have to work with was no less and probably in some aspects better than what I saw elsewhere. So it was really, it was really good. The patients council had, has been super good. The residents, they've been very good. A lot of them, just like everybody else, you know, they see the need and they want as soon as they can, but they understand that there's only so much resources we have to dedicate to them. So I, I don't think everybody's happy and I certainly won't pretend that they are. But I will say, a lot of people have pledged their support and has worked with us in trying to get through this. That said, what I'd like to do is I'm going to introduce some department heads. I'm going to start with Taren and I want to go to Matt from the PD. I want to have BJ and I'd like to have Ronnie just real quick, kind of give an overview of kind of like what they were dealt with, what they dealt with initially. And then I'm going to move it over to where we're at in the recovery after. Tell you what, BJ, go last and let Ronnie go before you. And then you go last and then I'll dovetail into that about what we've got moving forward. Okay?
Is the thing on? You having me okay? All right, first of all, I want to say there's a pattern here that's not lost on us. Two city managers ago, we got COVID when he came in. Last city manager brought us an ice storm and you brought us tornadoes. So we're going to stop with that, okay?
For the record, it's not me then, is what you're saying.
No, thanks for having us up to talk about it. I know it's been a tough few weeks for everybody in the community. Everyone obviously lives here in the fire department and all the departments we work with in the city. Idea is just give you a brief overview of kind of what things looked like on the ground that night and then move on to kind of where we're at today. That storm came very quickly. When I left work that day, it wasn't even on the horizon. It literally wasn't on the radar. And within, you know, 45 minutes, an hour, I'm headed right back here. So we didn't have a lot of advance warning. We were very, very fortunate not to have any significant injuries or any loss of life. I mean, it was, it was truly a miracle in every sense of the word. So basically in the first hour, around 6:15 at the fire station, we stood up what we call an emergency operations center. Conditions were less ideal. We know we have some opportunities for growth in generators and some different infrastructure. Basically operated on battery powered equipment and manual maps. And we were really fortunate to have a lot of our team players from around the county and the state descend on Moore's Point within an hour to an hour and a half. When I arrived back here, we already had the EOC stood up. The clean fire chief contacted me and said, Taren, where do you need me? And he was over here operating our staging area in front of the fire station. Within another 30 minutes or so, we had the Texas Forest Service and then TD and the Texas Emergency Management subsequently thereafter. We handled 75 incidents in the first 48 hours. And to put that in perspective, if you're looking at your council package each month, that's an average month, even kind of higher average months. So in 48 hours, we did a month's worth of calls. Most of those were related to wires down, wires arcing, power loss, things of that nature. All have some significance. They all have the potential for an ignition source and starting a fire. But fortunately, none of those did that evening. We started to see some different types of calls the following day. We had a couple of residents doing damage surveys on their home. One gentleman got on top of his home and then wasn't able to get back off his roof. We used our aerial ladder company to go out and pick him off the roof with yours truly and one of our fire specialists on the stick. So not ideal conditions. Also our condominiums, the Waters Edge condos, and they've been great to work with the association over there. They had a resident come in to check on someone else's apartment or condo over there and opened up the door to find the entire ceiling collapsed. And we found the entire roof on the back side of building one was gone. That was, that came to us as a structural collapse. That was probably the most significant call we had. And we've been working with that community to help address what they need for inspections and moving forward with getting recovery efforts there. Of the types of incidents, already kind of covered that. We started doing a little system and I think you'll have a picture of this. We use what we call box maps. You've heard me use that term before. We've divided our territory into 11 different areas. That's been an ongoing process. It was that night because we actually used those 11 separate areas to pass out to our police officers and different people, different responders to go out and clear and make sure the homes were cleared and weren't fired and prevented us from duplicating efforts. So that worked very, very well. The road ahead is a long one. I know right now, fortunately, we've been working, firing resources that might be able to come in and help us. That process is slow going and I know we have some other things on the books that our city manager's working on with contractual stuff to come in and it's all going to happen together. Our police department's fantastic that night and I know Chief Succi will get up and talk a little bit about that. For one, people talking about maybe burning brush and just paying the fine. Please don't do that. The other thing is the involvement of the fire department in the cleanup efforts. And I, I just want to say, you know, for you guys and your constituents to pass out, we have typically one member on duty overnight. There's a few reasons that we can't, one small injury to knock a firefighter off that roster and that's immense expense to the city if that happens. The other aspect is their health and safety. If they're working hard and hot labor and then go to a fire call, their chance of having a medical incident is very, very high. So there's a couple of factors out there. It's not a lack of concern, we are, so. I think that about covers the highlights. Is there anything else you guys would like to ask in specific or?
You guys did great.
Yeah, really. I just, if, do we have penalties or whatever the word is, fines if you do burn trash in the city?
Yes, outdoor burning is a penalty of $200 to $1,000. It's posted in several signs throughout the city, including Oakmont Park. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon or evening. So a lot of what I will tell you has been already kind of touched on by Chief Assas. So as we know, we were hit on the May 22nd by an EF2 tornado or the outsides of an EF2 tornado, less than a mile away is where it touched down. So I'm going to go into a couple of particulars that night for us. The police department used our city outdoor warning system to warn residents of the immediate danger. Again, I know I've touched on this before. We do not do that. It takes away from the actual effectiveness of those sirens. So when we sound our sirens off, we want our residents to know, we're not joking. It's time to hunker down. Don't get outside with your cell phones in fact, go inside and get away from the storm. So with that in mind, the first sighting of the tornado being on the ground by law enforcement was 6:21. So it gives you a little bit of, it'll stay on the ground about, for about five minutes, six minutes, lasting that long. So that night, we had two personnel on duty during that time, Officer Anderson and Sergeant Newsom. Sergeant Newsom was sheltered in place at the public safety center with some of the fire rescue personnel. Officer Anderson was actually on the turn place. He was able to make it back to the station. So around 6:34, we actually utilized our emergency callback procedures, just like the fire department. We called back 12 of our 14 members. So that included our full time, our part time and our non-paid personnel. The only two that we did not call back were the two furthest away on the opposite direction. So one was a paid guy and one was a volunteer or a reserve officer that we did not call back. We immediately set up an emergency operations center at the public safety center, which initially consisted of myself, emergency management lieutenant Jimbo. It also was joined by battalion chief Sibley and lieutenant Hodge. That was the initial emergency operations center we set up. And then later we were joined as chief one throughout the night. So at that time, after spinning up the emergency operations center, we started working by box maps, as Chief Assas says, using their box map system. We sent police officers using the box maps to assess the needs. At that time, the assessment was any, we were going to looking for any injuries, fatalities, any trapped victims, anything like that, that was life threatening. That was their first priority. So using that, they relayed that back to the emergency operations center and then the emergency operations center divided response capacity beginning around 6:30 that evening. And we continued that till about 6:30 Friday evening. So basically a whole 48 hours is kind of what we operated that under that emergency before we broke down basically our emergency response. During that time period, the police department had 162 calls for service and some of those events were shared with the fire EMS and then, and some of those events necessarily weren't law enforcement related or fire EMS. They were specialty events that we went, sent a crew to assess and then found out that it was a specialty crew like Encore or Astound or AT&amp;T and then assessed those, addressed them. Is during this event, and still to this day, we witnessed strangers helping strangers, neighbors helping neighbors, of course. This event, we couldn't have, we couldn't have prevented this. As everybody knows, you can't prevent the weather. And so working with BJ, Taren and the rest of the city crew, Jesse and his guys, I want to say that we stood by, you know, and I like what we were handed that day, which again, Chief Assas says, we were without power, just like everybody else. So we did what we had and what we worked with. So does anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for all that.
I'm getting as many phone calls as I have and they're not pleasant. But I did have a little good news. We were open two or three hours before the storm started, so that was it. It was fixed and everybody could get on there. We were pretty excited. We have, we have got three, three bids on, on the marina and stuff. I don't know if we reached out.
We have the contracts, the contract was signed yesterday and the notice proceed was sent out yesterday, I believe, this morning, okay, this morning.
Okay, marina will be open before the top will. And the only thing that won't be open is dock A. They will try to make a way over there for them, but the dock has still been up. I don't think the blocks will go back in there. So safety is a big thing. They won't have electricity on one because it's, it was cut from all the stuff. But the rest of dock should be open. I've got, I think, two more trees to cut up there. Just cut up and let maintenance pick it up and then the top and everything should be ready. The trailers are all cleaned off and stuff. And if y'all have got any questions?
So I know that we, don't you know?
We've been looking into it. You want to take this one?
I'll just say that a couple of things. One is get reimbursed for that, but I'm not sure what we'll get. And of course, we're going to have FEMA discussion and state Texas recovery funds.
Tore up. We're going to get with BJ probably Thursday and see what they think they can do, if it's fixable or what. I was hoping we might, if we talk it over, if there's not a bunch of meal to do or something, maybe we can get us through the summer and then as the winter comes, that'd be a great time to shut it down and let them.
I was just wondering what we should tell the marina patrons for a consistent message of they can't get to their boats. I mean, like, so what can we tell them?
A lot of them are swimming out there, kayaking out there, swim, not even our people just down there swimming. But if some of them took a generator, we've got a few took some little generators across there and they, they're raising their boat up and using their boat, but we're not able to serve them gas or nothing. We have to send them to North Point to do gas and stuff, so. But if we could, I'd really love to get the message out though to them. Whatever we do, if Dave can get with you tomorrow, so people, they're blowing our phones up and stopping in our houses and stuff. So Dave will meet with you tomorrow, if that's fine.
So at this point, if they want to take lift.
If you don't have.
No electricity.
No electricity. So you can take it down, but your boat has to stay in the water. You can't lift it up, right?
Unless they bring their somewhat generator.
Generator, unless you have your own generator.
We may can talk to some of those.
Thanks, Ron. So, yeah. Okay, should we finish? It's almost 10 to 6, but should we finish with BJ and then?
Do that and pick up.
It's pretty short to kind of piggyback off the chiefs. So when this event happened, myself, maintenance and utilities were both called in to come to the public safety center. We had two city tractors. We were teamed up with FD units to start clearing trees, the streets. Memorial Day weekend, the pit was open eight to eight. All weekend long, we had utilities and maintenance guys working in there to let people may. We started picking up brush in the city with our city crews. We started down here by the pool and we have made it to Cliffwood so far. Mission from a crew that may be able to come in and help us, but we're going to continue every day just picking up what we can to try to.
BJ, you guys have done an awesome job, man.
It's been a.
Honestly, before.
Especially without power. And without a generator.
This is why Morgan's point is so great because not only did you guys save the day, but so many citizens jumped in and helped each other and that is why we have.
Currently today, we have a heck of a team here. We're all working together and everybody's working.